Luke's the chairman of the board and to my left is Jeff Ramsey. At this time, I'd like the other boards to introduce, the other board members to introduce themselves, starting to my, from my left.
Dr. Cherry.
Kathy Collier. Riverbend Township.
Katherine Roberts, Dallas Township.
Mark Upchurch, Charlevo Township.
Chris Howes, South Point Township.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business will be our prayer and our pledge of allegiance, and I would like to recognize Mr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please join me in prayer. Father God, we thank you for the blessings in our life, those recognized and those unknown. We thank you for those who serve us each day in our armed forces and for the protection that they provide, that we so often just walk in not realizing all that they risk. We thank you for allowing us to meet in a body in a public place and that you have given us the ability to educate our children. We ask that you provide guidance and wisdom as we move through this meeting and be with us in all the days of our lives. Amen.
Amen.
I would like to invite Mallory, if she would mind coming forward, leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business will be to adopt the agenda. I think everyone has a copy of that in front of them, and this is an action item, and I will need a motion for this.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we adopted the agenda as written.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Do any, do I have a second?
Sir.
Ms. Cherry has second. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing no discussion on the agenda, all in favor, and it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Our next item will be good news, and I will turn it over to Mr. Booker.
Thank you. Members of the board, this person that I will call forward tonight probably needs no introduction after all the fanfare of last week. A year ago, he took the spotlight as he was recognized as our Gaston County Schools Teacher of the Year, and since then, we've all had the opportunity to experience what an outstanding educator he is. He made it through the regional competition, and now everyone in the state recognizes as well. Of course, I'm talking about Bobby Cavanaugh, our North Carolina Teacher of the Year. Last Thursday was truly a great day for Gaston County Schools. I was able to attend the ceremony and care, and it was just a great feeling to hear the state superintendent say, "And the winner is from Gaston County." And I can just say, we had to apologize because Gary Ford and I jumped out of our seats and led the crowd in a standing ovation there. I just, I could go on and on about Mr. Cavanaugh and all that he's done. I will say that there is one regret. He shared this last week with the South Point family as we were recognizing him. The juniors of this year are disappointed because he will not be able to teach them next year, because he will spend all of next year as an ambassador for public education in the state of North Carolina. So he'll be out of his classroom, but he'll be doing great things. This past year said in her closing remarks that she had spent 56 nights in hotels as she went throughout the state speaking and talking about public education. So we will look forward to hearing more from Bobby and how Mr. Cavanaugh spreads the great news about public education as serving as the North Carolina Teacher of the Year. Mr. Ramsey?
Well, it's my pleasure to present. Yes, because I got to experience how great a teacher he is. My two sons, Tyler and Andrew, were both blessed to have you as teachers, and as a board member, we'd like to give you a certificate of recognition presented to Bobby Cavanaugh, South Point High School, North Carolina Teacher of the Year, 2016-17, April 11, signed by our Chair, Kenny Lutes, and by our Superintendent Jeffrey Booker. Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you very much.
Come on, girls. You're better than that.
No, my wife's out of town right now, unfortunately. There we go. Yeah, yeah. This way, girls. Big smile. Keep smiling. And one more, big smile. Thank you. Thank you very much. Wait, you want to take everybody's hand too? Come on. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. They're coming too. Thank you very much. Thank you for all of you. Thank you. Good seeing you. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you for all of you. Thank you very much. Thank you for all of you. Thank you very much. Thank you for all of you. Hey, let's grab a day off. Really good break. Girls. Good evening. Good job.
Members of the board, I'd like to take some time to recognize some impressive students that are with us tonight from Ashbrook High School. We just talked about someone being recognized as the state Teacher of the Year. How would you like to have the title of state champion four times in your high school career? Tyson Fortenberry, a senior. Come on forward, please, Tyson. He recently won the 3A State Championship in the shot put at the indoor track championships. This is the second year in a row he has earned this title, because you may remember him being with us last year. Now, we look forward to seeing if he can repeat his same accomplishment in outdoor track, because last year, he won both the shot put and discus state championship, and it would be exciting to see him win both those titles as he heads to NC State University on an athletic scholarship. So Tyson? (applause) We appreciate all that you have done, and we hope that the rest of your senior year is an excellent experience for you, and just thank you for the recognition you have brought to our community. Mr. Howes?
He's still... Tyson is a, I don't want to say a kid, he's a man-child. That I've gotten to work with at Ashbrook for the last four years in the chapel for the football team. He's an amazing young man, gives tirelessly of himself, but he gives it in a team effort. And so this is kind of unique for him to get something that's an individual award, because he's not necessarily about the individual as much as he is about the whole. On the football team, I think he even kicked, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
He was the kicker. I mean, imagine the other team, on the receiving team, when they come out and they go, "That's the kicker?" Because he's supposed to be like the Rudy-sized guy, like me. And so he played point guard on the basketball team at four foot six. No, he didn't, but he probably could have. Tyson from the board, it says, presented Tyson Fortenberry, Ashbrook High School for Outstanding Achievement, North Carolina 3A Shot Put Champion, signed by our Board Chairman, Mr. Kenny Lutes, and our Superintendent, Mr. Jeffrey Booker. And so I'm going to say congratulations. If you don't bring home the next one, just don't even plan on coming back, and you can transfer to Duke or something. Okay? So, great job. Great job. Come on, you've done this before?
Nope.
Hold it back. Can you just get it from?
I'll go.
Yeah.
Smile. Smiling. And one more. Thank you. Good job. Congratulations.
Members of the board, we often talk about how we have a diverse education experience in Gaston County. You've seen a great teacher, great athlete. Now I want to highlight a great artist for us. Aleah Saint-Chang. Good afternoon. She has just earned the Best in Show Award at the annual Gaston County Art Competition. She is new to Gaston County, having moved here all the way from Las Vegas, Nevada, where she was attending a performing arts school. The title of her award-winning painting is Reflections, and you can see it on display through May 7th at the Gaston County Museum in Dallas. Aleah is going to attend the University of Reno next year, and we wanted to take a moment to recognize her and congratulate her for sharing her talents with us in Gaston County. Mr. Booker?
Y'all are killing me at Ashbrook, because I'm not athletic enough to give Tyson an award. I'm not artistic enough to give you an award, and unfortunately, we got one more that I won't be good enough to give either. Here's a certificate of recognition presented to, go ahead, help me out, but say it fast the way it is. Your name.
Aleah Saint-Chang.
Aleah Saint-Chang. See, I told you to get it right this quarter. So Aleah Saint-Chang, Outstanding Achievement, Best in Show, Through an Artist's Eyes, April 11, 2016, signed by our Board Chairman, Mr. Kenny Lutes, and our Superintendent, Mr. Jeffrey Booker. Congratulations. Awesome. Awesome.
Smile. And one more. Thank you. Good job.
You all had the pleasure of having her lead us in the pledge, but it was a great joy for me. A couple weeks ago, I was in the hall at Ashbrook High School, and she walked by, and Mr. Clinton said, "Come here for a second." And we spent the next 10 minutes, the most engaging conversation with something that just lets you know, folks, the future is bright for our country. She's been here with you before. She's earned a number of awards over her time, but tonight, we want to recognize two of her great accomplishments. First, and I'm sure her dad is happy about this one, she has been recognized as one of the top scholars in the state and has received the prestigious Park Scholarship from NC State University.[997.16][997.16](applause) And remember, folks, that's a nationwide pursuit, and so over 2,000 seniors sought to be a Park Scholar, and only 29 were recognized. She will get to study abroad, do extracurricular, as well as do the many academic functions at NC State. But we also have her here tonight, and I see a couple great science leaders in our school system out here to support her, because she has participated in the North Carolina Science and Engineering Fair, and she earned her way to the state level after winning our local fair and taking first place at the regional fair. She has an interesting project that all of us in the South have fought the battle with, kudzu. So Mallory, what's the official title, production of?
Cellulose acetate, polylactic acid, and non-professional plastic from kudzu.
What's the scientific name of kudzu? That was the one that was really tripping me up.
Pyrurolat.
Okay, so y'all have cutted kudzu all your life. Pyrurolat. But her project earned the U.S. Army Bronze Award in the Senior Engineering Division. And what's even more impressive, she has now been asked to compete on the international level. She earned a place in what is known as I-Suite, or the International Sustainable World Energy Engineering and Environment Project. It's the largest event of its kind and will include students from far away as South Africa, China, and the Netherlands. It will be held in Houston at the end of this month, and we know that she will do well in all that she does. Mallory, we really wanted to just pause tonight and congratulate you on being an outstanding student in our district.
Now, I feel insignificant in my academic career. Mallory, this is presented a certificate of recognition for Outstanding Achievement in the I-Suite Science Fair as a competitor in that, and we look forward to you winning it. And I think I read in the Gazette a couple days ago, maybe it was over the weekend, of how many inventors are in Gaston County that have patents, and so we probably have, what, 30 out of you, and then golf courses will be calling you like crazy. Also, a certificate of recognition for Outstanding Achievement as the Park Scholar. Anybody ever looked up what the necessity is to be a Park Scholar? I didn't even know GPA could go that high, or SAT score was that big. From North Carolina State University, both of these signed by our Board Chairman, Mr. Kenny Lutes, and our Superintendent, Mr. Jeffrey Booker. So congratulations on both of those.
Thank you.
You bet. And then, Mr. Chairman, if you would, I'd like to bring Tyson and Aleah back up to make Mr. Clinton look good.
Yeah, bring Mr. Clinton up, too.
It's a great school accomplishment.
Mr. Clinton, you've challenged your junior class to keep up with the senior class average.
Can I bring up?
You can bring everybody up. Come on up. I'm glad to see Bianca with us. Everybody.
Smile. And one more. Do you want to get your picture?
Oh, no. I'm keeping.
Joey, before you step, will you introduce each of the folks that you have with you that support these young folks?
Sure will.
Bianca, don't go away. Come on, you get some credit.
You guys, come on back up real quick. This, of course, this is Ms. Yadala, she is one of our science teachers. Fantastic teacher. This is Jake Apple, who is our Athletic Director. Dr. Kevin Plonk, who is one of our guidance counselors, and our art teacher, Ms. Katie Wise.
Thank you for all of you there. Now, get, get ready. Another young man is about to come forward that towers over us. I had the pleasure of meeting him early in the year, and he has lived up to challenges. You know, last year, the state champion wrestling team for the 2A class division was the Huskies from Hunter Hus, and this year, they sent a number of representatives to the finals again. And so we want to recognize Dalton Jenkins, who won the state 2A Championship in the heavyweight division. He entered the tournament as a regional favorite, and he dominated all the way to winning the title. Both head coach Michael Kennedy and assistant Larry Hindren were honored at the state tournament. Mr. Kennedy was named the 2A Wrestling Coach of the Year, and Mr. Hindren was honored as the overall state Assistant Coach of the Year. So the Husky wrestling team continues to bring home great honors for our school system. I see Mr. Ross is back there making sure somebody doesn't recruit these folks away from you, so... But we are proud of all that you have done, and Dalton, congratulations.
Well, first of all, I don't live far from Hus, so I feel very safe. Very, very safe. Can't say enough about Dalton. He's a general giant. I have seen him in the halls. He's very protective of his peers, but I've also seen him wrestle. And he doesn't play when he wrestles. Getting another ring, getting another state title, that shows how good he is on the map. He also plays other sports. He dominated in football and several other things. And you're going to wing it next year, and will do us proud there. He's just a good, all-around man, and very, very proud to have watched him progress at Hunter Hus. Can't say enough about, about these two guys. They're just not coaches. You know, you talk about family and team and things. These two, and their other coaches too, they, they show that every day with, with these The wrestling team, because I've watched them, they have encouraged me to watch them, it is such a diverse group of young men, from every background that you could ever imagine, and they have embraced them, they've taught them, they've mentored them, they've showered them with love, they've showered them with pain, everything, but they've created winners in every aspect of their lives. And I can't say thank you enough from our board, because we know that they're going to be successful no matter what they do. And Larry, he actually got the award from the national... Am I saying this right? Tell, tell.
Tell them, Mike.
Tell them, Mike.
National Wrestling Coaches Association, Assistant Coach of the Year for North Carolina.
Which is a biggie. So, on behalf of the board, on behalf of our Chairman, Kenny Lutes, and our, who are you? Our Superintendent, Mr. Booker, congratulations. Thank you. We are extremely proud of you.
Thank you.
Dalton? You? You?
Thank you.
And if you don't mind, I'm gonna let Dalton's family come up here, so that you can get a picture, and Michael, I know your mama, and I know Squirt wants to come up here. His son is the biggest show-off.
Everything.
Oh, now you're being quiet.
I don't know.
You're not gonna smile now? You can't be in the picture if you're not gonna come on. I'm getting a little bit... Come on, Mr. Ross. Come on.
come forward along with their family to make a special presentation to us in remembrance of their son, Dan. I think Dr. Balthanite will come forward after the remarks to receive these gifts. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Lutes, Superintendent Booker, fellow board members, staff, and guests. On October 28, 2014, our youngest son, Dan, passed away unexpectedly at the age of 26. In the year and a half since his passing, our family has been touched by countless acts of love and care from so many in our community.
One such gesture to honor Dan was a special book that was given in his memory to the Charlevo Elementary Library by the first grade team of teachers. The book is entitled Archaeologist Tools, written by Anders Hansen, and it's a wonderful informational text for our young readers. This gift was very special since Dan attended this school as a child and was later able to fulfill a lifelong dream of becoming a contract archaeologist. To celebrate National Library Week this week and to honor the memory of our son, Dan Upchurch, our family wishes to donate a library-bound edition of Archaeologist Tools to each elementary school's media center in the Gaston County Schools District.
I'm sorry, I was...
You were... Okay.
We'd like to represent the curriculum and the, and the media specialists out there. We'd like to present this book to you and the elementary schools out there, and it says it's donated in memory of Dan Upchurch by his parents and brothers. Dan was a reader, a philosopher, a collector, a gym miner, scout, observer, student, traveler, mountaineer, archaeologist, anthropologist, son, brother, and uncle. So, and I knew you knew him very well.
Yes, Dan was a student at the middle school where I worked as an assistant principal, so this means a lot to me personally, but for all of our schools in Gaston County.
So, this means a lot to me personally, but for all of our schools in Gaston County, we will appreciate this as a contributor to our esteemed program. This fits nicely into our curriculum. So, thank you for being so thoughtful to give us something that represents Dan so well.
I'd like to introduce my son, Lutes, and who was formerly under Ms. Dr. Balthenite, and my son, Will, and my pride and joy, Mary Ellis.
So, thank you.
It's over here.
You want to have the young girl hold the book? Stand and hold the book. Are you sure? It's fine for sure. That's good. Just like that?
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Upchurch and Angie, for being so thoughtful in planning this to coincide with the National Library Week. The theme this year is Libraries Transform. I know from designing over 30 new schools, the library is the heart of any school. And it's a place that really is the center for transforming learning and discovery for our students. In recognition of National Library Week, we would like to take a moment to thank all of our school librarians, some like to be referred to as media specialists, for helping our students every day and for strengthening the instructional program in all 55 of our schools. So, I would ask that you recognize them with a round of applause for all that they do. And, Mr. Lutes, that's all the good news we have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Our next item on the agenda is public expression. Do we have anyone signed up? Okay. Seeing no public expression, we'll move on to the approval and correction of our minutes. We would like to approve March 7th and March 21st, if everyone's had those long enough to take a look at them and if there's anything. But that is an action item, and I will need that in the form of a motion. Yes, Ms. Cherry? Ms. Cherry has made the motion, and Mr. Ramsey has seconded. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, and it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is our Classroom Moment. I would like to recognize Dr. Balthenite.
Good evening, members of the board, Chairman Lutes, Superintendent Booker. I would like to recognize York Chester Middle School. They've come tonight prepared to present a Classroom Moment. I've asked Ms. Holbrook if she'll introduce her teachers and students. But first, I'd like to take a moment just to talk about Ms. Holbrook. This is her first year at York Chester Middle School. Even though she's had 21 years in education, she's currently pursuing her doctorate in educational leadership. But when I went out to meet with Ms. Holbrook the other day to prepare for the Classroom Moment, I found her out on the track, the field, and they're having recess. And so I want to commend her, number one, because a lot of times you hear from our schools that we're not allowing our middle schoolers to get healthy and active, and I sought an action at York Chester Middle School. So, some great things are occurring at York Chester Middle School, and I'd like for Ms. Holbrook to come up now and introduce her teacher and share some of those with you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to highlight some of the great things that are going on at York Chester. One fortunate thing, special thing for me today, is we had Sylvia Hatchell, a women's basketball coach for University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, to come and speak to our students today. So, she was able to give us, give the adults some shirts and sign some memorabilia. So, that was great, that we can, you know, raffle off later on. So, we were very excited about that. But our students and staff have made great gains this year in the development of the culture that is committed to pride and excellence at York Chester. An example would be the fact that we are leading the district in projected proficiency and growth through the STAR math assessments. And Ms. Spargo and her students will be able to speak about the additional examples that we do offer here at York Chester. So, thank you for this opportunity. And Amber Spargo?
Ms. Holbrook, before you move on, talk about Coach Hatchell called out and made note of the change of the way your sixth and seventh grade classes rose as the eighth grade. Talk about that.
Yes, we have Monday Assembly Meetings every Monday, and the whole student body gets together. And we have various speakers come in. We try to get a speaker once a month. And her topic was perseverance, and some of her life examples or life experiences that she had through fighting cancer. But yes, that is a practice that we do have, is our sixth and seventh graders rise for the eighth graders to come in as a sign of respect and give some pride to the school, and that is one of our important features there. So, yes, she did a great job. I'm so happy. I'm a Carolina fan, so there you go. But Amber Spargo is a product of Gaston County Schools. She's a graduate of South Point High School and also a graduate of Belmont Abbey College, where she achieved her bachelor's degree in elementary education. She began teaching at York Chester in December 2013, and she is consistently looking for better ways to sharpen her saw and improve her teaching skills. She is currently a Pinnacle leader and is in pursuit of her AIG licensure at Wingate University. And as a top-five finalist for the Leonard Rader New Teacher of the Year Award, she strives to inspire students to love learning and to change students' perceptions of math and science through integrating technology and utilizing meaningful investigations. So, you want to see an example of what the great things, what she does with her kids and what the kids are able to accomplish in the classroom. So, I'm so very proud of Amber Spargo. So, without further ado, take it on.
Chairman Lutes, members of the board, Superintendent Booker, I just want to just thank you for the privilege and opportunity to come speak today, just to share a few things of the things that are happening at York Chester Middle School. Ms. Holbrook had already touched on our success in STAR. And on the team that I'm presently on, the seventh-grade Huskies team, we have seen a consistent increase each test and window of proficient students. Now, proficient students are those students who meet the NCE score of 60 and above. And that's a great indicator and predictor of those students that are going to score proficient on the EOG. You have an 88% chance of scoring proficient on the EOG if you have an NCE score of six or above on the STAR test. And you only have a 14% chance of scoring proficient on the EOG if you score below an NCE 60. And when students do score the NCE, one thing that we are doing at York Chester Middle School is school-wide recognition with up arrows. And not only do we have the up arrows throughout the school, they have on their locker. If a student shows growth on the STAR test, they get the up arrow that they get displayed, and all the students know that that student has achieved growth. We also represent with team recognition. So, if a student has shown growth, they get a cougar paw in the hallway on the board. And if they have an NCE score of six or above, they join the NCE 60 and above club. And that recognition has caused students to buy in to that STAR test. And when you see the growth that we have seen from the 10% to the 40%, you know that the students are truly buying into the test and working hard. One way that I believe that we've done that is through student engagement. I'm a one-to-one classroom, and that was provided to me by Pinnacle and by Ms. Holbrook. I had a vision for my classroom at the beginning of the school year. I'm awarded 15 Chromebooks through Pinnacle, but I knew that if I had one-to-one in my classroom, I could engage all learners all the time. And so I went to Ms. Holbrook with that vision, and she provided me with 15 additional Chromebooks. That's increased in student engagement. My students take an active role daily in their learning. It's student-paced, so if a student needs to work a little longer on the slides presentation or another student's already creating a project, they can do that. It's at their pace, and they do not feel the pressure to move on. And the web-based tools that have been shown to me through Pinnacle and apps they've created, they're using that Upper Level of Blooms to create and display their knowledge on a concept. And you can see in the picture students working hard in science to look and to dig deeper, using inquiry-based learning. One of my, the most successful things that I think that I've come across this year is my success with math tasks. It's something that I'm very passionate about, and I've seen my students show tremendous growth through the development of conceptual understanding of concepts rather than simply memorizing a formula. You know, when I was in school, that was the one thing that we did. They gave me a formula, and I memorized it, and then I applied it. But did I really understand why that formula worked? So, what we do through these investigation tasks, similar to what they do in elementary school, is the students understand and develop an understanding of why. And they come to that understanding through themselves, and they develop that knowledge. So, that rather than just having that for the test, they are going to continue on with that learning, and they're going to be able to apply that further on in their education. Some important components of this, that we've got to develop that classroom climate that's conducive to discussion. Because students, when you're working with investigations and you're working with tasks, they need to be able to discuss those tasks that they're doing and discuss the strategies they use within the classroom, with their peers, and with each other. And if they're not comfortable discussing, and even if they don't understand the concept fully, then you don't have a classroom that's conducive for this environment. So, letting them fail, but then pulling them back up is what we need to do when you're using math-based tasks. Also, acting as a facilitator, I've had to pull back in my role as a teacher. I'm used to directing instruction, but now I'm leading the students through facilitation. I'm also connecting to prior knowledge, taking that knowledge that they've already gained and helping them develop those new concepts. And the most important part of the task that we complete in math is that purposeful questioning and looking deeper, not just on the surface, but having the students understand why, how they came to it, and having those questions planned, but also knowing that when you're in those discussions, new questions may appear, connecting to things that you may not have known that they would connect to, things from elementary school. So, here's one example. When we started surface area, and surface area usually is one of my least favorite topics to teach just because the students tend to struggle with it. And so, going back to that knowledge from sixth grade, if you're using our nets. And so, a net is where you have that solid or that 3D figure, and it's unfolded, okay? And the students see that each of those faces is a different shape or a similar shape to another. And so, the students can break apart the 3D solid and find the area of each face. And then, when they build it back up, they see that it can form the surface area. It's the outside covering rather than the inside, which would be our volume. So, our students were given the task of taking these nets, finding the surface area without me giving the formula, fold it up, and understand what surface area was without me teaching it to them first. So, the students are in there digging, inquiry-based, looking for that knowledge. Once we were able to develop that, we went to a further task, and that was surface area of a square pyramid. Now, we use NearPod a lot in my classroom. And so, I don't know if you've ever heard of NearPod, but it's a great presentation tool to keep students on a particular slide and on a particular part. So, I love to use that when I'm doing my task. So, the students were given the task. It says Maggie is making decorative pillows for her bedroom, using the patterns below. How much fabric will she need to make each pillow? Now, I hadn't taught surface area of a square pyramid. We had talked about area of a square. We had talked about area of a triangle, and the students had solved that. And they had done surface area of a rectangular and a triangular prism, but this was something new to them. And they know when it's a math-based task that I'm not going to tell them how to do it. I may come around with questions, and I'm walking around, you know, assessing them as they're doing it, asking those questions, but they know I'm not going to tell them. So, some of the questions you may ask when you pull them together are like, what is surface area? And they need to tell me what is surface area. Without understanding what it is, they can't do it. How do we determine the surface area of a solid? So, I'm taking it further. What do we do to find the surface area? What solid is created when the net is folded? Because they're not going to give them the net on the EOG. They're going to have to understand, I need to fold this up, and then how can I break it apart? How did you know? Explain. They not only can just tell me what their answer is, I need them to explain and defend. What strategies did you use to start the task? Now, you may have a group of students that started at a different point. Did anyone have a different method? And we share around the room. Students come up to the board, and they use what they've learned previously to explain to the class. How do you determine the length of the squares? You see that it just has one of the side lengths pointed to. They had to tell me that relationship. Well, I know all four sides are equal. That's how I was able to find the area of my square, because I knew that that was 20, so the other side had to be 20. Did anyone find a quick method for finding the area of all the triangles? And at that point, they need to kind of explain to me, well, I found the area of one, and then I multiplied it by four. Without giving the formula, my students are able to come up with how to find the surface area of a square pyramid. So, these are some student samples that you can see, and where they've kind of worked out their problem. You can see that some of them have rotted in the middle, and they're breaking apart each individual shape, and that's what I want them to do. And they're finding the area, and then finding the total surface area, so they know that they need to find the sum of those figures. And it's also very important that you're using correct math terminology and vocabulary throughout all of this. So, the students are connected to that. So, when they see it on the EOG, they know exactly what it's talking about. After that you've completed your task and your discussion, this is a kind of a tweaked version of a concept map. And we come and do this as a group, and we take out highlighters, and the students are highlighting the individual shapes. This is the formula, but the students are coming up with it on their own. So, they're coming up with, well, I had one square, so I'm going to put one square. And how do you find the area of that one square? And we talk about that. Then we talk about, well, it had four triangles. Well, how did you know it had four triangles? Well, it has a base of a square, so it has four sides. And so, the students then tell me, well, how do I find the area of my triangles? And they're listing and breaking this up themselves. So, without me coming and saying, oh, well, this is the area for, the surface area formula for a square pyramid, my kids are developing it on their own. So, they're developing that conceptual understanding, so that when they see any problem, that surface area, they know all I have to do is break apart the shapes and find the surface area. Now, once we get through that, the students need to practice those skills and see problems that they're going to see on the EOG. So, we break apart, and they have independent practice in Google Forms. Again, this is with having a one-to-one classroom. I can easily formally assess my students on a regular basis. And I use Flubberoo, and that grades it quickly, and the students receive feedback the next day. And this helps drive my instruction. I can look really quickly and see what were the common mistakes my students made. What do I need to go back over tomorrow? What can I move on from? You know what? Everyone pretty much gets it. Let's move on to something else. And that helps me drive my instruction, and it helps them to get that immediate feedback rather than waiting on me to grade something and get it back to them a week later. They're getting that immediately. So, I think that's very an important key factor, too, when we're talking about math. So, I've brought three students with me. I have Talia Hun, I have Crystal Flores, and I have Darius Williams. And they just want to come, and they want to speak and say a few things about what they've seen this year in the math classroom and how it's impacted them. And then, they each have their own little business card with a QR code that they're going to share with each one of you, so that you can use a QR code reader and scan and see some of their work that they've created in science and in math. There's links on a Google Doc to some of the web-based tools, so feel free to look at those as well. And they also would like to share their Google Classroom with you on their Chromebook, so. All right, this is Crystal Flores.
Hey. I want to speak about what we do on tasks. It's when she puts a problem up on a board, and we have to solve it with our partner without her telling us what to do. So, we have to use our background knowledge to know what to, how to solve that problem. And this helps me personally, because I know I'm using my brain to solve this. And, um... And I know if I get confused, I can ask her for clues, and that can help me solve it the right way without her telling me exactly how to solve it. So, it helps me solve it like easier, because I know that it's what I did before, and it's connected together. So, it helps me solve it easier.
The next student I have is Talia Hun.
Hi. I'm just gonna... Okay, so what we do in the classroom, especially with our Chromebooks, is Ms. Spargo talks about integrating, you know, technology into the classroom. So, it's like we do different... So it's like, we do different things like, um, slides to help us know all the different formulas and, you know, all the things that we really need for the classroom. And then we also use, like Ms. Bargo said before, NearPod and that helps, you know, she can basically control the slides on our computer so we can keep up to what she's saying. Um, so that's really good. And then, um, also like, um, tasks, they help us really well, like she said, because, you know, she puts the problems on the board and she doesn't exactly tell us how to do the problem exactly. So what we do is we have to work with our partners or even if we feel comfortable by ourselves, whoever we, you know, feel we, who needs help and everything. So what we do is we take the problem and then we have to think about it to see what, all the, everything that we have to do. And so basically we know, okay, what? Okay. So we use our general knowledge of math and previous, you know, lessons that she taught us and we basically try to figure out how to create the problem. So when the, we go onto the board, like after she gives us time to think and see if we could solve the problem, then normally somebody will raise their hand and they go up to the board and they show, you know, how they did the problem. And if there are any mistakes, then she tells us, you know, what we have to do to correct it or she does, you know, it's just a really good way to, um, learn, so.
And my last student is Darius Williams.
Um, I would like to talk about how math challenges me this year, but it doesn't frustrate me. It helps me get it better and learn stuff better. So Ms. Bargo helps us do our stuff, we learn it better.
That's why I thank the students. I know how hard it is, you know, being a seventh grade student coming and speaking before people. But just like Darius talked about, it's so important that we're not frustrating the students, but we're challenging them. And that's what math tasks do and I just think it's such an important thing that we're integrating to the classroom at York Chester Middle School and I just thank you for the opportunity to come and share this with you tonight. And I, they would like to come around and just show you a little bit with their Google Classroom and pass out their cards.
Any comments or questions while they're coming around? I'd also like to thank Ms. Brooks and Mr. Sange who worked with the staff at York Chester Middle School to get the presentation together. And I would like to commend our teacher. Mr. Booker said earlier that the future is bright. I think our future is already brighter because of the things that we're seeing in the classroom at York Chester Middle School. So I'd like to thank the staff at York Chester Middle and everyone that worked to get the presentation together. Thank you.
Dr. Bogdan, I wish we could share this with our county commissioner and realize what Chromebooks will do in the classroom for us. So hopefully we can set that up where we can present that to them.
And again, thank you, Dr. Bogdan and thank the entire staff at York Chester and all, all your participants. Thank you. The next item on our agenda will be a committee report from the operations committee and I would like to recognize Mr. Collier.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. The operations committee met, uh, this last Thursday, April 7th at 4:30 in the facilities conference room, AKA the bomb shelter. Uh, we reviewed and approved the minutes from our February 29th meeting and we heard updates on our two new school projects. Uh, the first one, Boomerang Architects informed us that the architect bids were open on March 3rd and that beam construction from Cheriville was the lowest responsible bidder. Their bid including alternates totaled $20,573,700. The committee recommends that the board award the contract to beam construction for the construction of the new elementary school. LS3P Architects informed us that the bids were open on March 5th. Uh, the, the low bid actually withdrew their bid when they found out that, uh, they were low and they have the right to do so. And that left the low bidder being Branch and Associates from Roanoke, Virginia. Their bid including alternates totaled $25,171 million and the committee recommends the construction of the new middle school to be awarded to Branch Associates from Roanoke. Mr. Hoskins updated us that the purchase of the parking lot has been put on hold that we discussed, uh, earlier. Um, the seller has withdrawn their, their contract that we had and, uh, will, they're going to reconsider their decision on the property. It may take some time for, um, the seller to reevaluate what they're doing with that parking lot. Mr. Garrett updated the committee on the status of the new township grants at South Point, Hunter Huss and the Cheriville Nixon Gym. All projects are in various stages of the bid process and all projects should be completed this summer with the exception of Hunter Huss, the track, which we're, hopefully will have completed by, before graduation. Mr. Hoskin and Ms. Harvey reviewed the list of priority capital projects that we presented in our last work session and this list is, uh, continuing to be worked on and we realized, uh, after going through this, that this list is, uh, it's going to change, um, as, as projects get completed and as, uh, more, I'm, I'm going to say as fires crop up, our capital problems kind of just move from, uh, one week to the another. It's kind of, as, as I said in our committee, it's kind of like in the fall when you announce the top 10 in football, it changes every week. And that's the way this, uh, capital priority list is going to be. So with that, um, with our busy schedule this fall, uh, this spring, I'm sorry, um, our committee has decided that, uh, we will determine our next meeting date later because of all the conflicts with all the meetings going on this, this spring. And I'll answer any questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Any questions for Mr. Collier concerning elementary and the middle school bids?
Mr. Chair, they are on the agenda for action?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Okay, those are on the agenda for bids. If I see no questions for Mr. Collier, I would entertain a motion from Mr. Collier or one of your committee to accept that we'll do them one at a time, I think.
Okay, Mr. Chair, coming from our committee, uh, does this need a second, um, our attorney?
No.
Okay, uh, so it comes as a motion, a second from our committee to, um, as item five on our agenda, awarding the contract to the new elementary school to Beam Elementary, I mean to beam construction for $20,573,000. Let me say that again. Award the bid to beam construction for, in the total amount of $20,573,700.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? And it is unanimous. Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, coming from our committee with a motion, a second. We'd also, uh, recommend that we award the construction to the new Stanley Middle School to Branch and Associates from Roanoke, Virginia in the total amount of $25,171,000.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Any questions or discussion? Seeing no questions or discussion, all in favor? And that also is unanimous. Okay. Um, the next item on the agenda is the 2016-2017 Gaston College High School Calendar, Early College High School. And I would like to recognize Dr. Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz, board members and Superintendent Booker. Uh, you have before you a proposal for Gaston Early College. As you know, they operate on the Gaston College schedule and so this is a proposal to align them with Gaston College for the 2016-2017 school year.
Do I have any, do we have any questions? Okay, seeing no questions, this is an action item and I will need that in the form of a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. We accept the calendar here for 2016 and 2017.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ramsey. I have a motion. I have a second from Ms. Cherry. Any other discussion on the calendar? Seeing no other discussion, all in favor? And it is unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Maddox. The next item will be the, uh, accepting of the budget that we're going to, uh, present to the county and I would like to recognize Mr. Hoskins.
Good evening, Chairman Lutz. Vice Chairman Ramsey, members of the, of the board, Superintendent Booker. Um, last month, we presented, uh, members of the board with the superintendent's budget request. Um, so we want to update that and then, then have, uh, for your approval, uh, the Board of Education's budget request. Uh, so as with every budget presentation, I'd like to go through the calendar just to make sure that we're still on track. Um, and the, the next date that we really, uh, have is we need to deliver this Board of Education budget to the county commissioners on or before May 15th. So if we get this, this approved today, we should still, uh, be on track with that. Uh, since we last presented the budget, we've had several questions come up from various sources. Um, and I just want to go through about six or seven of those questions. Uh, the first one was whether or not we expect any changes, uh, to the state teacher allotment formula for next year. Uh, unfortunately, there will be some positive changes. Uh, the first positive change is they are going to, uh, reduce the student-teacher, uh, ratio for first grade from 17 students to every teacher, which we have this year, to 16 students for every teacher next year. Uh, in addition, uh, we expect to have about 230, uh, additional students next year and we will, uh, expect to get additional teacher allotments for those additional, for those additional students. Uh, one, another question that comes up quite often is will driver's education be funded by the state this year? Uh, this has been sort of a political football over the last couple of years. Uh, fortunately, last year as part of the budget, they included a funding source for driver's education. And this is a new, uh, motor vehicle registration late fee, which will have dedicated, uh, funding source for our driver's education program. Also the 55 million that we, uh, expect the county to sell in bond proceeds, uh, in the coming, uh, month or two to build the new schools. Uh, one of the questions is will we be able to use any of that, those funds for maintenance of our existing schools? And unfortunately, the answer is no. Uh, that 55 million is dedicated solely to, um, consolidating the four existing schools into two new schools. Um, however, we are requesting some additional capital funding from the county. And we'll talk about that, uh, towards the end of this presentation. And that's an extra $4 million that we are requesting for those purposes to help, uh, with repairs and replacement of capital items on our existing schools. What new funding requests are included that will improve, uh, student education and improves, uh, student test scores? We are requesting an additional $7.5 million of local funding. Almost all of that, 90, almost, or over 90% of that, uh, will go directly to improving, uh, student education and resulting in improved test scores because we are funding new teachers for middle schools, new literacy teachers. We're increasing, uh, salary supplements to maintain the teachers that we have. Uh, we're starting a new steam magnet program for the elementary schools, uh, and additional technology in the classroom. So all of this funding, uh, has the primary purpose of improving, uh, student education and improving test scores. Uh, how many students are served by, uh, literacy teachers? Uh, generally literacy teachers have small, uh, group sizes, six to eight, uh, children at a time. And on average, a literacy teacher can serve 65 to 95 students for a year, depending on how many, uh, children that teacher may have, uh, in their, uh, little literacy group. So if you took 30 literacy teachers, which is what we're asking for, and I think if you had about 80 students per child during the year, that's touching 2,400, uh, students and helping them with their literacy. And that's one of the things that we have asked for, funding literacy teachers. Uh, how is the local budget affected by charter schools? Uh, charter schools are considered to be public schools as well as, as we are. Uh, so we are required to remit a portion, excuse me, a portion of our county funding to the charter schools based on their percentage of students enrolled in the charter schools. So we have about 5% of Gaston County students that are enrolled in charter schools. So of the 43.8 million that we get from the county, we have to remit 5% of that to the charter schools. So that's about 2.2 million of what we receive. So that's about 2.2 million of what we receive in county funding goes to those charter schools. And finally, are there any new school security items that are planned in the coming year? And I think that will always be answered yes. We have made great strides in the past. Over the past three or four years, we've added SROs to all schools, not just high schools. We've enhanced our visitor check-in system. We've secured the exterior doors with the new Helios software product. And we do continue, or plan to continue to upgrade our camera systems and also evaluate the need for exterior security, such as additional fencing, to make our campuses more secure. So with that, I'll just summarize what we talked about last month. We are requesting $7.5 million of additional funding from the county. That's broken down into three categories: school personnel, instructional support programs and operations. The largest item is almost $5.6 million in school personnel. As I mentioned earlier, we're asking for 30 additional literacy teachers. That would be one additional literacy teacher for every elementary school. Right now, we have one at every Title I elementary school. So as I mentioned earlier, if they can serve 80 children, then that helps improve the literacy of 2,400 elementary school children in Gaston County. We are also asking for additional middle school teachers, about 22 teachers, which on average is about two per middle school. That is one of our challenges, is improving middle school math, which is also one of the initiatives that we have outlined in our new capital, or our new budget request. There's also a 3% increase for our classified employees. That includes bus drivers, cafeteria workers, maintenance workers. These are people that have not had raises in years, whereas state workers have received raises, county workers have received raises. We have that in our budget so that we don't continue to lose good employees to other government agencies. With the instructional support programs, we have, as I mentioned earlier, our steam school opening at Hawx Nest next year. That's one of our largest instructional support programs. Also mentioned literacy, in addition to the teachers, we'll need supplies to help support those literacy programs. Operations, the largest item there, the $1.3 million, is $1 million for new computers for our smart boards. Every smart board runs off a computer, and as we're getting more and more active in using those, those computers are now four and five years old, and they're not able to stream all the things that we're wanting to be able to do. So we're not able to maximize the use of those smart boards. So that's the largest component of the operations part. So the total funding, as I mentioned, 7.5 million. When you take the 7.5 million, you look at what we got last year, 43.8 million, we will be requesting from the county, if this is approved, funding of $51.3 million from Gaston County. Now, in addition to that, we also receive, or budgeted to receive, about $750,000 in fines and forfeitures. That's been fairly consistent from year to year. And also, we fund a portion of our budget out of our fund balance. Last year, we funded $2.8 million. This year, we're budgeting $1.8 million. As you recall, $1 million, we're asking the county to fund, and that's what we use to increase salary supplements for teachers. In addition to our operating requests, we'll also have a capital outlay request. Just as a reminder, capital outlay includes roofing, technology vehicles, HVAC, plumbing, all the capital, mechanical types of things that are in the buildings. And we are requesting $5.2 million from the county. We've received $1.2 million for capital repairs and replacement over the last several years. So this does equate to about $1 square foot, whereas we've been funded at about 25 cents per square foot. Now, in addition, the county will be, or has agreed to sell $55 million of bonds to help us build two new schools.
And with that, Mr. Chairman, I will turn it back over to you for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. Any questions for Mr. Hoskins from the board? Yes, Mr. Howell.
Mr. Hoskins, I want to clarify, and Mr. Booker can help or somebody else. In your presentation, you said that there was the request for the middle school teachers, the additional middle school teachers that were equated to two per middle school on average. I just want to verify, is every middle school in Gaston County getting two extra teachers? Or is that going to be based on population and attendance? Because I don't want somebody to call me in August and say, where's my extra two teachers?
Yes, sir. The 22, we have done some preliminary meetings with each of the middle schools based on current population and projected population. So the 22 is averaged across the middle schools. So you're correct to clarify that. It doesn't mean that one may get three and one get one, but on average, it'll be two.
And a second, I'll knock mine out if that's okay. It's okay with the board. $1.8 for, I saw there was coming out of our fund balance, where before it was 2.8, we were asking the county to pick up the 1.8. When are we going to talk about what-ifs when it comes to that 1 million for teacher supplements? Because I don't want to give and take away. That's, I think Mr. Collier was one of the ones last year that said, we've got to be careful in funding ongoing expenses out of capital, out of our fund balance.
And you bring up a great point, and that's what, as we move forward in talking with the county about it, we meet with the county manager, and we have already made him aware of that that million, which was in your request the last two years, that it would be in the request again this year. And then if you look in your budget book, we broke out the million as continuing operations and the half million to do an additional increase to the supplement as a new funding. So we agree with you, and that is a concern for us as we present this.
Final question, I know is our office looks at computers and refurbishing and getting new computers. One of the things that we were approached with and we're seriously looking at is the cost-effectiveness and budget-wise of being able to purchase a computer every three years because they become inadequate or obsolete versus leasing a computer. How does that 1 million play out? And how does that benefit or not benefit the county when it comes to technology and keeping it updated?
We have competitively bid. For example, when we purchased this last round of Chromebooks, when you buy over 4,000 at a time, you get such a competitive price. The lease price, which you would pay over a three-year period to lease, we feel the purchase price is cheaper on that. These that we're looking at are the desktops that support the smart boards, and we'll do the same competitive analysis as we proceed forward with that.
So you're saying it could be leased, it could be a purchase?
We always look at, we always look at that option, but typically, because of our cost of capital and the dollars, spending it one time versus putting it into an operating ongoing expense, it is better for us to do the purchase.
Yeah, and most people, you know, to buy the Chromebook was $200 apiece, and most people won't lease that, but...
Chromebooks aren't sufficient for smart boards. A media computer. Yeah, it takes that.
Yes.
That's it.
Yes, Ms. Roberts?
Since we're on the subject of the million for the smart board computers, how many, do we know how many that will buy? I know you're going to look at purchase and lease, but I guess it's a two-point question. How many need to be replaced, and how many are we looking to replace immediately?
Well, all of them are outside of warranty. These were bought under a grant that we received four or five years ago. And so the ones that are not failing are getting very slow, because technology, you're running more bandwidth through those computers than they can handle.
You said all of our smart board computers county-wide are out of warranty?
Yes.
When we, Ms. Roberts, to clarify, when we did the campaign, and we were set up with the $2 million contribution by Mr. Harper, and then the matching funds came for the $2 million, part of that putting in, there was over 1,000 additional smart boards. And then we had to power those and create desktops. And so we purchased almost 2,000 desktops and went with each of them. They are just coming to the end of life. So that's what the million dollars is budgeted for. I don't know that...
And it's just under 2,000, and the price, the estimated budgeted price is under $500. So again, it's hard to lease something.
And you've heard us talk about that from a bandwidth usage. While we're the ninth-largest district in the state, our usage is using the top five of districts in the state. And so NC Ren, who we purchased that through, has been increasing our pipeline for us to use it, because we are a technology-heavy district, and that's where this need has come from, is that as that pipe is growing, and you see it in your own personal devices, you're doing more and more in high-definition and those items that's causing these machines. And the cost to upgrade versus to replace, it makes more sense to replace.
Any other questions for Mr. Hoskins?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, the questions that Gary went through generated, came from you all at the previous board meeting and then some follow-ups. So I appreciate the attention you all have given to the budget. I think it's been very helpful in Gary's presentation. You've seen the difference in the way we're presenting it with ongoing operations and asking, giving you the sheets that explain it. I think that has helped a lot, and you all have given good feedback and clarifications on those as we present it to the commissioners. So I appreciate the effort that you all have put forth as we reach tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Any other questions or discussion for Mr. Hoskins? Okay. This is, we want to, this is an action item. We want to approve our budget request tonight. So I'll need a form of motion. Yes, Ms. Cherry?
I make a motion that we accept the budget as presented by Ms. Hoskins.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Do I have a second? Ms. Rubchert has second. Any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Roberts?
I had sent out a couple of emails regarding the budget since we're voting on it tonight. And I would just like to hear some opinions on asking the commissioners for a joint meeting to go into some in-depth discussions over this budget. Every year, we send them a letter, send them our budget, and we're not the only budget that they're looking at. We've done that the same way many years. We usually get a flat budget. I would love to see an opportunity for us to get together and for staff to be with us as well for any detailed questions that they may have, just to help them understand our numbers more.
Sure. I will make an effort this coming week to try to get in touch with their chairman, Chairman Kegler, and see what their schedule is, and see if there's a possibility of us being able to get a joint time where both committees could sit down and discuss it. Is that okay with everybody that I contact? Chairman Kegler? Yes, Mr. Collier?
Yes, I think that's a great idea, and we talked about this a bit in our retreat, and I think it's more than appropriate for board members to reach their representatives or anybody that they have good relationships with as far as commissioners. And Sharon kind of broached this ground, and I encourage it where there's good relations, Mr. Chair. And I don't see any harm in them having these kind of conversations. Anything, as Ms. Roberts says, is different than what we've done in the past.
Sure, I understand, and I think that would be perfectly fine also. All right? Any other, yes, Mr. Howell?
As it relates to the 1617 budget, there's a couple of items in there that I, I won't say I struggle with, but I don't have great peace about in stating that, knowing what our needs are as a system, knowing that there's some areas that we need to improve upon. But with that being said, I want to say that I trust Mr. Booker, that to us, this is the superintendent's budget. Once we vote tonight, that becomes the board's budget. So I have great confidence in Mr. Booker and his staff, that he's presented to us what he thinks the needs are of maintaining a ninth-largest school district in the state and trying to make it become the number-one district in the state. And I want to echo what Catherine and Kevin have said. I think it's important that we have that meeting with the county commissioners. We're going from a 4.3, or $43.8 million budget to a $51.324 million budget. And we know the history of the past of what they've given us and why they haven't. And so I want to concur that I think it's important that we have that meeting. It's important that, based on what their answer is before they ever get to their meeting, that they can explain it to us, why or why it is not good to increase this budget. And then if they opt to say that it's not good, I want them to explain to us, how do we achieve what we want to achieve in according to what they're trying to do in the economy of this county and maintain families coming in thinking they're getting a quality education. Now, they will argue that they are, that families are, and I will argue that they are. We've got the North Carolina State Teacher of the Year, we've got Park Scholars, not just one, but we have many that are candidates for big-time scholarships. But it is, the burden of getting the Ford running on all eight cylinders is costing us a lot, and our teachers are paying the price on that. So I think it's imperative that we don't request a meeting. We almost demand a meeting. I think we have to leverage our ability and leverage our leadership as elected members of this county to put it back with them in a very businesslike manner of what we need and what we desire and why we desire it, and then put the onus on them to say yes or no. And then, I think, based out of that meeting, we need to, we need to either congratulate them on being out-of-the-box thinkers to move our education system in the direction it needs to go, or we need a challenge to explain to them, this community, why they think that's not important. So I hope this board would concur, and that at least on the budget, we would be one voice.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Mr. Ramsey?
Yeah, for example, our classroom moment tonight, we see the investment, the extra million dollars we got in Chromebooks. We see the kids are engaged more, and they can go at their own pace. We need to share that with our county commissioners and let them realize if they invest in Gaston County, return on the investment's going to be a lot better for creating new jobs for us and have a trained workforce for them also.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Any other discussion or comments? We have a motion, and we have a second. I would like to call for a vote, all in favor of the 2016-2017 Board of Education budget. All in favor, signify by saying aye or raising your hand. Thank you. It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. We appreciate all your time and your staff and your effort that has gone in. I know there's been a ton of work involved in this. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, and then this also is an action item. Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented in our board book.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Do I have a second? Mr. Ramsey has second. Any discussion, comments? Seeing no discussion or comments, all in favor? And it is unanimous. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to turn it over for the superintendent comments. Mr. Booker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's apparent from all the information you've received over the last week, we are extremely proud of Mr. Kavanaugh and the recognition. But I wanted to pause and let you know, that is a huge effort across this district. It starts with his colleagues at the staff of South Point. He was, he gets to invite seven folks to that. Three of them were his colleagues that he brought with him, and it was just a pleasure to watch their pride in one of their colleagues being so successful. And then to be at the pep rally at the high school on Friday and watch the whole students and the pride they take and having an outstanding educator. And then it gets into the whole process that's led by our Human Resources Department and the work they do preparing and helping him to get to the places. And he has recognized a number of those folks. And then you wouldn't know about any of it if it wasn't for all the communication work that is done, and Todd's team coordinating and getting that out. So it's a huge thing. We're very fortunate that we were able to secure a tape of the actual announcement at the event last year. And we'll be putting that on Channel 21 as soon as we can get it in the right format to do that. Also, we were able to take some video at the pep rally so that we can continue to celebrate that. But I just wanted to pause and thank everybody who had a hand in that. And he is, Bobby's been very gracious in acknowledging those folks. And so it is a huge accomplishment for all of our district. Also, you know, we've started the Hawx Nest Steam Academy process, and we have had an extremely positive response to that. We're approaching almost 600 applicants for the slots now, which is exciting. So we feel good about that process. But we want to let folks know that it is still open. The deadline is not until May 13th, so there's still time to apply. The deadline is not until May 13th, so you have still time to apply. The lottery will be the following Friday, May 20th at 4:00 p.m., held in Highland. And so, that'll be a public meeting where the folks can come and see that occur. You should have found in your seat tonight an invitation from Web Street. They're doing a first-ever student fashion show. It'll be part of their PTO's work and it is on April 30th at 6:00 p.m. And would love to see folks out for that. Also, as Mr. Collier's committee talked about, we're at that time of the year where events are beginning. So, you have at your table, or in front of your seat there, a list of all the events. Starting tomorrow night, we have the Parent Advisory Council. We'll be meeting with staff at Highland. And then the Best and Brightest Awards Ceremony is Wednesday at 5:00. So, you can just tell that the next eight weeks as we wind down the end of school will be full with, with a lot of great things. Also, I wanted to pass out to you, the Public School Forum has just released their 2016 Finance Study. It is available on their website, but just secured copies for each of you to have. Just to remind you, this is something that's been done for over 25 years and it just looks at what the actual effort is taking to fund school systems across the state of North Carolina. And it breaks it down by county and looks at the individual county effort that is done. And this is just a report that is referenced by a lot of folks as they look at our funding and funding across the state. And so, just wanted you to have that. And with that, Mr. Chair, I would ask for a closed session for personnel tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-11 dot, 143-318 dot 11, Paragraph A6 for personnel.
I have a motion to go into closed session. Ms. Cherry has second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, we'll be going into closed session.